Gland allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane. Kelly, Diane. That's fine, Kelly. Your turn.
Today for consent and approval, exoneration, there are thirty-two listings, ten thousand seventy-four dollars eighty-one cents for tax years two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Pudgy orders as of September twenty-five. Statement of services for George B. Armstead, Cynthia Stafford, and Lynn Crane, minutes of July twenty-four and July thirty-one. Purchase orders and pay vouchers. General County Fund, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars three cents. General County Fund Purchasing Card, four thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars eighty-two cents. Cole Severance Fund, fourteen thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars sixty-three cents. Nine One One Cash, six hundred sixty-three dollars eighteen cents. Mason Dixon Park, one hundred thirty-six dollars seventy-four cents. Kent Monthly, three thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars seventeen cents. Chestnut Ridge Park, one thousand two hundred six dollars seventy-six cents. Law Enforcement and Forfeiture, one thousand eight hundred six dollars and thirty-seven cents. A total of ninety-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. There are no bonds and no budget revisions.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Forward now requisition for payment number three, Star City Tiff. Anyone from Star City here?
This is their standard requisition. They are asking for reimbursement of three thousand one hundred and ten dollars. And that would be a payment made to C T L Engineering and the development of the Tiff project in Star City.
Move for approval of the requisition.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
This will go to United Bank for payment.
Okay. Okay, a letter from Star City Mayor regarding designation of EMS provider. Anyone from Star City here? The mayor? Well, I know Jamie is, but I mean, you're here on behalf of the Commission today. Not from Star City. Okay. I read the letter. I kind of understand the rationale. This is something I think we may need to... It'd be good if we had the town council present here to sort of talk to their thought processes and why they think it would work and how they think it would work. That's my thought. Bill, do you have any thoughts?
I'm a little familiar with, I think, what precipitated this is that there's an unfortunate situation that occurred with a delay in ambulance response. Also resulted in a lawsuit. That lawsuit was one. Of course, it is under appeal. But the whole rationale for this is that if you need an emergency vehicle, wouldn't it make sense to call one that's right down the road as opposed to calling one that may be across town out on another call? And what the county has had in the past is that we have had an agreement, in fact, we had the authority for, I believe, for unincorporated areas. And I'm really not clear on for incorporated areas. I don't think we have the authority to tell Star City that they can't be the first called in their city. They're an incorporated area and they're a governing power. And I don't think we have any governing rights in municipalities. But I think this is a common sense issue, too. A common sense issue is ask yourself if you needed an ambulance and there's one down the street, would you want to be forced to take an ambulance to respond to your call that wasn't down the street? And I think unless someone can tell us otherwise, I think it's just a common sense decision that the town of Star City wants them as their first responder. It certainly makes a lot of sense. And I don't think that we can say no.
Tom?
I understand what you're saying. My concern is the bigger picture of the whole process of what, how do we decide who gets to respond or not? And that's my concern. I do not know, I mean, by looking at that, we have an agreement that how nine-one-one makes the decision. What I'd like to consider is first, if we would take this recommendation and give it to Mr. Magro to see if it meets, what are our options? Because I'm a little concerned, I don't know what our options are. And I don't want to say, sure, let's go with this. And then we find out later that it may bring a potential lawsuit because we're not following the correct directions of whatever nine-one-one should be. So that's my big concern. Second is then I would like to, I guess we would have to put it on, I wouldn't mind putting on a, not a regular session, but you know, a work session after we get that information with them being here, with also nine-one-one. Because I believe we, I believe, and all parties in fact, because we already had Mon General Hospital come and explain their concerns. I'm just worried that if we say, sure, they should respond, and then they're not able to, and then somebody didn't realize that, we may get in the same legal situation as before.
Well, the current procedure is set up with nine-one-one that EMS is first called.
Right.
Jan Care is second, and Star City would be third. That's a prior agreement. But problem has arisen because of ambulance needs within the corporate limits of Star City and not being able to have Star City as a first responder, having to take two other ambulance services which may or may not be closer. And that's the tragic incident that occurred. Now, there's speculation and whatnot, but you have to consider the fact that judgment was rendered for a delay that resulted in a death.
Right. And I understand, you know, my concern is say, for example, it's that no man's land between Star City and Morgantown. What happens? Someone calls in that area and says, well, wait a second. Star City is only, I'm only ten feet outside of the city limits. Why didn't they send them? So that's my only question and concern. I'd just like to see whatever we come up with when we have another procedure so we don't get into the same situation. I agree with you. It makes sense. You know, we were also talking about locators. And maybe this is the time to put in locators where all the ambulances are so they could then go to the closest ambulance.
Well, there's an argument, EMS has an argument in terms of not being the first responder just simply because of the scope of their operation. And if that diminishes their income in terms of the impact it may have on how feasible it is to operate. But I think you have to put the public interest ahead of profit here. If there's a need and who can serve that need the quickest ought to be looked at. But I have no problems with referring it to, for legal clearance on it, that we, what our position should be from a legal standpoint.
Should we also send a letter to nine-one-one to have their response to? Or, Mr. President, I'm not sure. What's the procedure?
Well, I think let's get that first.
Okay.
And generally, Bill's right that our authority is outside of municipality. However, in this case, the authority of nine-one-one and the emergency ambulance services is given to the county commission because of virtue of the emergency services. Therefore, we are the ones that have to make the final decision on this. And I think we need to look at legality of it. We also need to, after we get the legality of it, we need to notify nine-one-one. And I don't have a problem notifying them, sending them out there. I'm hesitant to, anyone knows I'm a touchy-feely type person. I'm hesitant to just send a letter to nine-one-one and say, you do this now without us talking about, okay, how's this going to work? What problems might you see? Like you said, if there's a no man's land, what difference does it make?
Yeah.
Maybe Morgantown's going to take a vote and say, well, we also want Star City for our Sun Crescent-Evansdale area. When you open that door, then other things. So I generally agree that if you've got a, if you live down the road from an EMS provider, and I don't want one called from five miles away.
Right.
I just don't. And I've been in those situations. And I agree, also agree with Bill that money should be the secondary consideration as long as we can continue to maintain valuable EMS service throughout the county. Diane, you want to add something, Diane?
I did forward that letter to Mike Wolf.
Oh, he's already aware of it?
Yes, I spoke with him this morning. He has met with Star City and with EMS. There's a new director there taking Linda Rudy's place.
Okay.
He would be fine with coming into work session next week to give you his opinion and talk about maybe changing the agreement that was made originally.
What, do you want to make a motion to refer this to Phil Magro?
I move that we refer to Phil Magro for a legal opinion so we can have it by next week for the work session.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Any other correspondence, Diane?
I do have a request for exchange in securities. This is presented by Huntington Bank, reducing the original face value of twenty-five million to three million. This is because we no longer have our major accounts in Huntington Bank. We've moved those to MBB. So they're asking that the new suggested value be two million one hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred eighty dollars and fifty-six cents. Need to approve that by motion.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, let me offer a suggestion here on our agenda and move up the discussion of funding for MUB over the boundary adjustment of City of Westover, just simply to expedite.
Okay.
Because I anticipate that, I would expect we're going to have much more discussion on the annexation of City of Westover than we will the MUB situation.
I agree with that. Let me bring this up. I didn't have an opportunity to mention two of you before, and it's better to mention everything in open meeting. Personally, my opinion is that the entire discussion on the annexation is between the three of us. We've already heard everything. We already know everything. And that's just my suggestion that there's, you know, they've already had, they already had, everyone had an opportunity to present every issue that they want to present. So that's my feeling, but your feeling?
I would concur, although I don't think we can preclude anyone that's here from making comments during the public session. But I think we have heard all the evidence and we've received correspondence. And I think we're just going to be labor of the points, or they're going to be redundant.
Yeah.
It's been submitted to.
That sounds good. Sounds good.
You agree with you, Tom?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Well, that's my thought. But let's go ahead and drop down to new business now. Discussion of funding to MUB for resolution of flooding problem in various subdivisions. Basically, what we have here is, we had in the work session last week, I can't remember, what was the name of that area?
That was being flooded, yeah.
It's Ophi subdivision and others.
Ophi and others, there's like five of them. I couldn't remember any of them. But basically, we have what I consider an emergency situation there that requires immediate attention. There's also issues of how to fund, how to fund different things and how to collect them. But in the interim, the emergency issues need to be addressed. Diane, you have anything else you want to add on this?
That's an opinion from Phil Magro. Basically, it would be a good idea if they were to be annexed into the city of Morgantown. Also, I have email from Tim Ball with some proposed figures. And actually, Tim Ball is here now, if you have any questions for him.
Oh, Mr. Ball, let's see. Why don't you just tell us what your proposal contains here? You can come on forward.
Yes, sir. Just to summarize, there are three problems plaguing that neighborhood. Sanitary sewer needs to be replaced, the screen needs to be stabilized, and a twenty-four inch orphan storm pipe needs to be upgraded. MUB is prepared to address the first two of those at an estimated cost of two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. But the third item, the resolution, the upgrade of the existing twenty-four inch orphan pipe is the real subject to be discussed here. We've done an initial estimate of the cost of that work at a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. That initial estimate is probably very low. We're in the process of revising and updating that estimate. It will be in the range of two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollars. I can't get you any closer than that today. The chairman of the Board of Health, Mr. Chico, suggested last week some quick fixes that might be done to help alleviate this problem in the interim. And so I've given you a proposal for three different types of activities. Actually, three different proposals. You can choose any combination of them that you find acceptable. Three different proposals for those quick fixes suggested by Chairman Chico. One is to televise and vacuum clean that existing pipe. The cost of that work is about sixteen-hundred dollars a day. I'm estimating about six days' worth of work. It could be less, it could be more. We honestly won't know until we get there. But for the purpose of this discussion, six days, estimated ten thousand dollars. The second part is to improve the screen at the inlet of that pipe so that debris is captured and not allowed to flow down the pipe and plug it. And also to do miscellaneous point repairs at any locations that are determined to be in need of repair as a result of the televised inspection from the first proposal. I've estimated those costs at twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The third is to simply maintain the inlet of the twenty-four inch pipe, which tends to become easily clogged by mud and other debris. We can go out and clean that inlet for about fifteen hundred dollars per event. I've estimated eight events between now and the implementation of the new construction. If that estimated frequency is correct, then that works out to be about twelve thousand dollars.
So your suggestions to deal with the emergency situation at this point is a total of thirty-four, five hundred?
Yes, sir.
We approved last Wednesday up to ten thousand dollars to evaluate that situation.
Yes, sir.
And if my memory serves me correct, which most of the time it does, there's a public safety issue here. And I really don't see us, again, this is a dollar and cents issue, as being weighted against public safety and not only of adults, of children playing in that area. I don't see us as having any choice because as a county commission, we are charged with public safety for the county. And I think it's incumbent upon us to stand up to that responsibility and say, let's go ahead and let's fix this. We need to keep our communities safe.
Tom?
Yeah, proposal number one is what we said we immediately were going to ask for because we didn't know what was going to happen after you found it. And I really feel, and I think all three of us feel, that the repair on the inlet screen really has to be done. So those are, you know, initial now.
One and twos.
One and two, yeah. One and two, it has to be done. Now, again, when you're saying proposal number three is could be up to eight removals, so if there's only four removals, then it would only be that cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll certainly manage all of these costs as well as possible to keep them minimized.
Yeah, well.
Will you invoice this as you go along?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so since we've moved to ten thousand, and again, I'm not going to do it yet, but you know, that ten thousand covered the proposal number one. I agree with Mr. Bartola that proposal number two, with number three being, number three being up to eight times. And then, I mean, if it's worse and you have to come back to us, then we're going to have to look at it again. But I would be in favor. I think this has to be done immediately. And I agree, it's public safety and it's something we don't want to do. And I think down the road when we, you know, start doing subdivision laws and rules, we may not have to deal with this down the road, but we have to deal with it now.
Oh, you have something to add?
Yeah.
I don't want you to confuse the two projects. I think at one point, we granted ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars from MUB to do the study for the Morgan Run Road water line extension. This is a new, this is a new ten thousand.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Two separate projects.
You're right. We stay in corrections.
Yeah, you're right. But it was, yeah, because I knew that we had to tend to. No, I would be very comfortable, Mr. President, I mean, to go with all three proposals and start moving it immediately. And I think, also get the word out that we believe importance in safety and, you know, this is a number one priority. And I think we're now putting our money where, you know, we actually talk.
Bill, did you want to add something?
No, no.
I agree. One of the, this brings to light something that we've discussed in work sessions. And we have, we have a number of water and infrastructure projects from sewage to water. And what I would suggest, not really change the subject, but sort of along the same line, as we start expending this money, we've got to really focus on as much funding as possible now. I'm sorry, the other gentleman that was here on the Morgan Run issue from MUB?
Doug Smith.
Doug Smith, thank you. He told me that he would give me information of places I could go in Charleston. And what I would suggest is this, along with Morgan Run, along with Bloody Run, and there's a couple others I can't think of, Snake Hill, that we put together a package that, as you suggested, Bill, I take to Charleston and I start knocking on doors until I can get money to finance this. And I have no problem knocking on doors. I have no problem people slamming doors in my face. I don't care. That doesn't mean I won't knock on the next door. So, but I think that a vote for this is mandatory given the bad, bad situation that has been and has been for a long time. Needs to be dealt with. And that we put together that package so that all the commissioners know what I'm going after and then they can cut me loose and I'll go down and beat on some doors.
As you do that, maybe we can also ask Renetta to see at the same time. Maybe we can balance that out with some grants. If we get some from Charleston and subsidize it with some grants, too.
Right.
Because we're doing a whole package.
Right.
And if you need any baggage to carry the money back, we can send it to you.
Okay, that's out there. Do I have a motion on this?
Move that we endorse all three proposals and fund them, as Mr. Ball has written.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
And if I can also add?
We're off and running.
Yeah, if I could also add, Mr. Ball. Again, I know MUB takes a lot of meetings in the paper and from us. And I want to say, and I know all three of us agree, and I'm not running for office, so I can say this without not running for office. I really appreciate what you've done. I mean, you're putting up the money and you're also trying to resolve the issues. And I really think that the public needs to be aware that you've gone above and beyond the duty to help us. And we thank you.
But don't take that as a reason to slow down. Actually, we want you to go faster.
I'll take it as encouragement.
And do even further above. Thank you. And please pass, or thanks to all your staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business we need to deal with, Diane, before we move into the discussion of the annexation?
I'm pleased to advise you that we've received a grant for two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a mobile command unit for, through the Department of Homeland Security for the nine-one-one emergency services.
Mobile command unit?
Yeah.
That means that the three commissioners are putting this car and moving it around?
Yeah, that's right.
With the buttons?
We'll have to do specs and advertise because it's well over the threshold. We'd like to advertise October the first and October the tenth for bid opening, October twenty-third at one-ten.
Say that again.
October twenty-third at one-ten.
And what was the other two dates you gave?
Those were advertising dates, October first, October tenth.
Okay, and then the bid up to October twenty-third?
Yes.
Do you have a motion on that?
I would like to add that there is a seventy-seven thousand dollar cash match with that.
We've got to add the seventy-five thousand dollars.
To the two-hundred-and-sixty-two, two...
Two-thirty-two, six fifty.
That's a better term.
Seventy-seven thousand.
Three to one.
Also, we'll need to set up a separate bank account that's not interest-bearing so that the checks can be electronically transferred for payments.
This is not a problem.
Move that we pay for, using the seventy-seven thousand dollars of match to move forward that grant.
Seventy-one, I thought you said.
Seventy-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, anything else? Okay, discussion of application for minor boundary adjustment by City of Westover. Bill?
Do I have to go first?
No, you don't have to. You can pass. I always go to the, I always go to the senior commissioner, if anyone ever notices. I always respect my senior.
You just said the commissioner on the left. You didn't...
Well, I don't mean you're older.
Tom's anxious.
Yes, I am anxious.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, if I may speak. Over the past three weeks, I've been reviewing the materials that have been given to me in regard to the Westover annexation. I have attempted to understand both sides and weigh those arguments with the current laws that are before the county commission. I would like to share with the residents of Mon County how I came to my decision through the careful review of the material provided to me from all three meetings and our most recent hearing. I want to make it very clear that as I sit here, not as a judge in a courtroom, but as a member of a tribunal that must decide if the petition before us meets the seven critical factors that the circuit court instructed the county commission to examine. The three issues that I examined closely were, one, is it contiguous? Two, does it meet the standard of the law as a minor boundary adjustment? And three, will it be in the best interests of the county residents? Although I've received an enormous amount of background material in regards to Westover's choice not to bring them all into the city limits, along with the concern that Westover government may have been flawed in their decision at this time, I do not believe that that is pertinent to this decision or my ruling. In my comment below, I will clearly state and lay out my argument with concrete evidence and facts to bolster my position. One, during the commission hearing on eight fifteen, two thousand twelve P.M. hearing, pages eighteen, line eleven to fifteen, the question of whether is contiguous was answered. Mr. Melick stated, quote, "The question of contiguous in subsection, or I should say, in paragraph one of subsection F, is one that we do not dispute. Therefore, both sides have agreed to this argument of the petition." Question two, the argument against annexation focuses on several issues as I perceive them. During the commission hearing held on five twenty-three, two thousand twelve, page one twenty-five, lines eleven to fifteen, it reads, "Mr. Melick states that the word shall, a determination by you as a county commission, whether the annexation could be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under section two or four of this article." He also continues to state on page twenty-nine, lines one to four, "They said they want to annex three parcels in, and they give acreages for some. Those add up to over one-hundred-and-five acres." Then on page thirty, he continues, line ten to sixteen, "If you misconstrue the statute eight-six-five, the way Westover wants you to, they could annex the rest, the unincorporated portions of Mon County. Why not? Where does minor begin? If it's one-hundred acres is minor, why not one-fifty? Why not two-hundred? Why not fifteen-hundred acres?" The argument for annexation focuses on the following as I perceive them. During the commission hearing on five twenty-three, two thousand twelve, pages thirty-two, page thirty-two, lines eighteen to twenty, Mr. Stranker for Westover states, "Confounded, we are resolute that this is the proper thing to do and is in the best interest of Mon County and the City of Westover." He continues on page thirty-nine, line six to eighteen, "Is it a minor boundary? Again, you're prerogative. We've got three parcels. One small one that's owned by Lowe's, which is adjacent to a parcel that's already been annexed into the city, and two large ones owned by Dejournay, that's what they had, a different corporation, but in fact, the same owner. So we have three parcels, same business activities on all the parcels, same needs, same service needs." same needs, same service needs. These are three parcels that clearly is a minor boundary adjustment, could be considered a minor boundary adjustment," end quote. Then he concludes on page 490, lines nine to 11, "But here we have three property owners, same businesses, same area, again, right on top of the City of Westover." Now, I must agree with Mr. Melick that this is not a minor boundary adjustment. It clearly does not meet the intent of the law as it was first written. However, during the 5/23/2012 hearing, pages 36, lines 12 to 18, Mr. Stranko states, "Now unfortunately, Mr. Melick's one-dimensional statutory analysis doesn't give you the full picture, so let me go back. We've talked about this before. Let me go back to the statutory history and Senate Bill 202, which is passed by the legislature in 2001 general session." In Mr. Stranko's letter of 9/6/2013, he states, "The purpose of this act was revision procedures for annexation by minor boundary adjustment and revising areas eligible to be annexed by minor boundary adjustment among several other changes to the annexation laws," end quote. He continues to state that removing this language, the legislature intended to permit, to permit annexation by minor adjustment when freeholders substantially oppose the annexation. He also tried to support his position by using the example of meeting with Lisa Dooley, who tried to explain the intent. Mr. Melick's response, responds that to interpret the laws and the bias of recollections of a lobbyist for the municipal league is frowned upon by the courts using the Phillips versus Larry Drive in Pharmacy Incorporated. Additionally, Mr. Bartolo states that during the hearing of 8/15/2012 PM, page 41, lines one to five, "They wanted to change the statute even though someone objected to it. It was felt that it was benefited the county as a whole. The county commission, in its discretion, could go ahead and approve it in spite of the objections." Then lines eight to 11, page 41 of the same meeting, Mr. Bartolo verifies the intent of the legislature as previously brought up by Mr. Stranko, where Mr. Bartolo says, quote, "And she told me, she said, 'Bill, this is exactly why the statute was changed, because they were running into a problem where one person would say no, I'm not in favor of it.'" As I reviewed this material, you now have the change in the law during the 2001 legislative session with a bill that specifically gives the county commission the authority to review the petition and make a decision that they believes in the best interests of the county without having the approval of the freeholders. Mr. Stranko's interpretation of the intent of the law is verified by Mr. Bartolo's conversation with the executive director of the County Commissioner's Association. In my opinion, Mr. Melick has no argument to offer to show any other reason why this law was changed and not be used when making my decision. Also, the question of what is a minor boundary, given to us by the state legislature is arbitrary and unclear at best. There are no guidelines or directions which exist for the county commissioners to follow. Therefore, I've looked at the argument of whether certain size acreage should be used or should I decide by how parcels are involved with how many owners tied to those parcels? I believe it would be strongly inappropriate to come up with a fixed acreage size, and that is more logical to base the argument on a limited number of parcels that only had three owners with similar needs. The final question, does it appear to be in the best interests of the county residents? This, to me, is the easiest question to answer. Montague County is a strong economic area in the state because of the strong cities inside of the county. Morgantown, Star City, Westover, Granville, and Blacksville are thriving and will continue to grow and prosper for many years to come. I only have to look at Marion County and compare the growth factor with Fairmont compared to the success with Morgantown and the surrounding areas. However, I am a strong believer that all the people in Mon County should be treated, should be treated equitably and taxed equally. I do not believe that those living outside of our city boundaries, using all of the amenities the city has to offer, profiting from their location and paying limited or low taxes are being treated in an equitable manner. From the city, or thrive because of your location across the city boundaries and do not pay the same taxes, that is equitable. One example of this is our current situation with new subdivisions being built outside of the city limits. Therefore, I believe this annexation would be in the best interests of all the residents in Mon County. Finally, I received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Van Gilder that are opposed to the annexation, and they asked an excellent question. "The state law is not clear. Therefore, until such time as the state legislature defines boundaries as to minor adjustment, no act should be, should be taken," end quote. However, in reviewing the information, I have learned that if the legislative intent is unclear, quote, "Interpretations of statutes by bodies charged with their administration are given great weight." And this is from a 1993 court opinion. The commissioners must move forward in making the best decision possible with the facts in front of them. If not, we would never grow as a county if we waited for the legislature to make a decision. Ergo, because of these reasons and based on these hours of research and reflection, I've chosen to support the annexation petition. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Oh, I, I, just a couple.
I'd prefer if you, if you have comments, go ahead and then, then.
Then you'll, you'll wrap up? Okay, that's, that's no problem. We're going to go the youngest to oldest. I, I think it's clear from day one that this was a re-presentation of the same issues that were presented previously. Um, I wrote quite a detailed memorandum specifically for the courts to address these deficiencies in the law. I also very, um, uh, was very adamant on that this is my interpretation. This is what the law says to me, not only on reading the law, but in practicing the annexation cases for some 20 years, uh, from that standpoint, having been present, uh, in, uh, during all the legislation on this rewrite of the law. The municipal league in, uh, wasn't present at the public hearing, neither was the County Commissioners Association president. And, uh, I'm not, I'm not, one thing, municipal league has never seen the annexation they didn't like. They love all annexations. And actually, they would take county commissions out of annexations just completely. That's what they've tried to do. That if the city wants to annex, you just take it straight to court. I'd be fine with that. This is a, a, as it's been held numerous times, this is a delegation of legislative authority to the county commissions to make these decisions, and they give certain guidelines. I, as everyone knows, thi- this standard, uh, that, uh, that is urged here for an annexation, which is basically turns the law on its head. Says, if you find out it's in the best interest of the county, then it's a minor boundary adjustment. Well, that's, 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 you know, you're looking up someone's skirt. I mean, you, they're upside down. I mean, you don't, you don't decide that. You decide whether it meets a minor boundary adjustment. Minor boundary adjustment is not based on whether people are for or against it. Minor boundary adjustment is, and we look at the intent of the legislature on the categories that they tell us to examine. And there's seven categories, contiguous, one, okay? That's a given. Whether the proposed annexation lives solely to division of highways right away or whether the vision of highways holds title to the property and fee, that's two. This starts showing the legislative intent. The legislative intent is when you have a public interest that has to be met. Uh, and there was nothing presented by Westover to say that they're going to take over the roads, improve the roads, uh, going to do anything to, for a safety issue. Uh, so, so that answer is no. Three, the affected parties, we can argue about the affected parties. But the fact of the matter is, is in order to, to say that the annexation can't be accomplished, they admit that under an election or a petition, that it would fail. So that, number three, has to be known. Number four, whether the proposed annexation, the street or highway is defined. The answer is no, and for the same reason. But you can see the legislative intent. The legislative intent defines minor boundary adjustment as those, first, you have to have a boundary, and then you have to be adjusting for a public purpose. That, that's clearly in their intent. Uh, whether another municipality had, has made application, annexed the same, substantial same territory, the answer to that is no. Whether the proposed annexation is in the best interest of the county as a whole. You have to get to these others before you get to the best interest. That's the public interest. Now, after three presentations, it is very, very clear. And I, I, I must commend Westover for their vision and what they want to do. But I am charged with following the law as I read it and I interpret it. I respect anyone's disagreement. I wish the courts and the legislatures would answer these questions. The courts won't. The courts will not answer these questions. The legislature, people in the legislature, our own delegates have told me that they don't want to, uh, they don't want to upset the municipal league because the municipal league would like to do away with this completely, this minor boundary adjustment. They just want annexa-, they want the city to be able to vote on annexation, and they take it. That's it. So... The issue is, as stated by the City of Westover, is that the mall needs to pay their fair share of the taxes to improve and advance Westover. There is not one single thing in this annexation statute and by the constitution cannot be. A revenue, a revenue statute has to be handled totally different than an annexation statute. But to levy additional taxes specifically business and occupation tax, that's the whole purpose. Nowhere in there has the legislature said you can use this to raise taxes. This is a tax-raising annexation plan. They've admitted it. So what does the legislature's intent, what do they say? And this appears to number of tax, so I go to tax statutes. But I picked out one that speaks most clearly to this issue of turning annexation into a tax-raising, uh, tax-revenue statute, which it is not. But the legislature finds that imposing additional taxes creates an extra burden on the citizens of the state. And this is 813C1. B, imposing additional taxes can be detrimental, detrimental to the economy of the state. And C, imposing additional taxes is only proper under certain circumstances. Calling this a minor boundary adjustment because you want the taxes. I guarantee you, if that place was vacant and needed to be tear down, torn down, City of Westover wouldn't be interested in it, and they admit it. They only want it for the BNO taxes. So let's shift to the BNO taxes. West Virginia Code 8135. Uh, paragraph E, the very last line, that's to municipalities. The pertinent part reads, "Nothing in this subsection shall be construed as permitting any municipality to tax gross income or gross proceeds of sales in violation of the Constitution and laws of the State of the United States, or as permitting a municipality to tax any activity that has a site outside its taxing jurisdiction." Now, I've used this term before. You read the code in paramateria. You don't interpret one part of the code that means in total. That everything has sense, force, and meaning. To interpret annexation, it being in the best interest of the county so that the City of Westover can collect more BNO taxes on a, on a business outside of the county defeats this legislative prohibition that's included right in the code. Additional taxes was never, ever considered as justification for an annexation. And nothing in their presentation shows that they intend to use that money to advance economic development or advance the mall whatsoever. They, their plan is to use it in other, other age. Now, I'm sure they will be good citizens, and I respect all the people. And, and as I said, I, I find their goals admirable. But when I, I've taken a lot of oaths in my day, and as I'm sure these other two have too. I cannot, in good conscience, find that this is a minor boundary adjustment as intended by the legislature. And I cannot find that anywhere in the statute that the legislature has said that you can't do it here. Everything else that's tax-raising or revenue has to be done this way, but for annexation. You can tax people if you annex them. This annexation goes through, there is not one develop, there's not one, Granville should have received their annexation on the same argument. There's not one that you can defeat. There's just none. Because Pleasant Hills, uh, the industrial park, West Run Planting District, look at the benefit to the county if West Run Planting District was annexed into Morgantown. We wouldn't have to pay for a planer. We wouldn't have to pay for all these people. We wouldn't have to make all these decisions. Just put it all in Morgantown. The statute and the legislature never meant to turn this annexation upside down and use it as a method of raising taxes on, on, on people, and that's, that's the sole purpose. So, consistent with my prior vote, uh, I can't support it as a minor boundary adjustment, and I definitely can't support it, uh, for all the reasons I've included in my prayer memorandum, plus also that it's clearly not in the best interest of the county to, um, pass ta-, to turn this into a taxing, uh, statute. It doesn't meet the laws, it doesn't meet the constitution. Bill?
Let me show you some things here. This book here, that's the mall's position. This one here is Westover's. This here is, Mr. Callen's right, I am the senior member of this county commission. I'm also the senior member of dealing with annexations. This is my third trip here on, uh, Westover's annexation, and disagreed with the first two. And hopefully, we aren't going to make that same mistake again today. I, you know, with all due respect to my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Bloom gave you a perspective of one of due diligence and whatnot, and I think that's commendable. Commissioner Callen, his area of expertise certainly gave us the insight in terms of a legal perception of, of this annexation. But before I get into some of these other details, I want to talk about the human side of this. I want to talk about evidence that was presented that indicated a feud developed over 20 years ago because some city officials couldn't work out an agreement with Glimcher Development in terms of the mall. And over those years, that, that has sort of festered in terms of the relationship between Glimcher and the City of Westover. Now, it doesn't really make any difference sometimes when, when disagreement is a disservice to both parties. What's important is resolution. And I think, hopefully, if nothing else comes out of this, that, that the positions are reviewed and reconsidered and some, some, the parties involved in this can sit down and, and talk about it and come to a mutually agreeable, uh, arrangement. I, I think that serves not only both of the parties involved, but serves the community as a whole. You know, anytime you bring in third parties into a disagreement, both parties may not get what they want. And, and that's probably true, because I, I would think that Westover would want a relationship with the developers of the mall. And I think the mall really would like to get along with the community where they're located. Uh, it's these kind of issues that need to get resolved. And, and I think there's a, the- dimension to this issue that it needs to be resolved in everyone's interest, and I'm not sure that that's gonna happen here today. There still may be an undecided or a dissatisfied party to this issue, and if it goes on to the next level, hopefully, the courts won't send it back to us if it goes on. I mean, this three times is enough, you know what I mean? I, we, we've dealt with this issue enough, uh, there's certainly been the implication that there's legal interpretation issues. Uh, if that's the case, then let the courts decide that. Uh, and, and then so be it, however we, we live with it. But I, but I would encourage both parties to consider, sometimes, third parties don't give either party what they want. And it's much better for the parties who disagree or have the conflict to sit down and resolve issues for, for mutual benefit. Having said that, I wanna make note that, that the, uh, the code does require us that the final order of the commission shall include the reasons for grant or deny of the application. And one of the, uh, I'm not gonna carry this on too long, uh, one of the things that I wanna point out is, is we got some supplemental correspondence, both from Mr. Melick and, and from, uh, Casto, Kay Casto and Chaney, and in one document in particular, Ray Somington wrote, uh, at least you're credited with being the author. And I would encourage anyone to read that. I, I thought it, it was, uh, informative, focused, framed the issues, and, and responds to the seven points that the code requires a response to. Uh, and, and saying that, I would, I wanna make sure that, that his, that this correspondence is included in formulating the response for the decision. And with that decision, I can't tell you that I think that, uh, this county's the fastest-growing county in the state of West Virginia. Municipalities have existed for a while, not all of them at the same time, but municipalities serve as a base of public services for non-incorporated areas. The challenge that will face us in the future is the need for public services to outlying areas cannot sus, be sustained by taxation on only those people living in municipalities. We will be faced with the decision of funding resources to reach out to those areas that aren't in incorporated areas and ask them to pay their fair share for basic public services. One of the things that was talked about and was brought out during the, the process was police protection. Now, maybe because of my background, and maybe because of situations, but if you've ever been in a situation where you've needed the police, and you looked at your watch and said, "Where are they? Where are they? Where are they? Where are they?" That's the potential situation that exists now at the Morgantown Mall. Because should the deputy sheriffs, and should it be at a time of the day when they're in the western end of the county, and should it be a day that the state police are not on duty, which they have those days, who would respond if not Westover? Whether Westover wants it or not, they have the burden, and I call it a burden because the police officers may be risking their life when they respond, to respond to the needs of public safety. And one of the things I've had problems with here is this forced concept, you know? People shouldn't be forced to do things. Well, sometimes we have to require people to do things if they don't voluntarily want, want to agree to participate in, in the responsibility to help fund resources. I disagree with the premise that this is solely a move for taxation. I think there's a lot more benefits involved than just taxation. Certainly, resources are gonna help, but it's also gonna help provide more services to everybody else, everyone in the city, not just those that are already in the city, but those who would come into the city. I, uh, I, I guess I can't help, I've been in situations to where you need support and you need help, and where thirty seconds is a long time. So, I, I, you know, I can't minimize the public safety aspect of, of the benefit the mall would get out of this, but more importantly than the mall getting the benefit is the public that are inside the mall if the wrong situation should occur. Police protection is critical to public safety. And I'm sure, you know, it's, people look at issues differently. Glimcher came to Montague County to put in a business, to develop. That's what, that's why they exist, they're a business. And it's reasonable, uh, that you would expect them to, to not wanna give up profits. It's reasonable that you would expect businesses not to wanna have to pay any more taxes than they have to. Is it reasonable for Westover to accept this public safety addition to, to their operations without expecting annexation? Those are questions that I think that people have to answer for themselves, not me. I know what my position is, is that if you benefit from the services, then pay your fair share. I don't care who you are. That's what we're all about. That's what we're all about as a community, that's what we're all about a, as, as people. We can have our conflicts, we can have our disagreements, but when it comes to public safety, when it comes to a better community, I think we need to work together, and, and I would hopefully, hopefully, it would be my hope that, uh, today could draw the line to where the, the, uh, the mall and, and Westover could sit down and come up with a mutually agreeable resolution without having to take the, to the next step. And you would have to take it to the next step, because I make a motion that the annexation request by the city of Westover be approved.
I second.
A motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote no. Motion passed. Next. Uh, reports from county commissioners. Bill?
Uh, I think Bobby got a TV set in, didn't you, Bobby?
Yeah.
One of the senior centers said we're.
Shh, please, please, we're on, we're on camera, and they, they're trying to take things out.
And he's initiated that, uh, so, uh, I, I, hopefully, that's gonna develop further in short will, and, uh, the benefits will be realized by the community centers and senior centers.
Is it enough?
No.
Tom?
Um, I, I, well, I just wanna say that I was fortunate to attend, um, Charlene Marshall's eightieth birthday, and it was an exceptional event, and I, again, wanna welcome, uh, as part of representing county commission, I, I was honored to be there, and I think it was just a tremendous event to see how much she has meant to this community and also to the state, and I just thought you'd wanna know, it was, there were several people at J M, you know, there were a number of people here, and it was a very nice event. Thank you.
I, I don't have anything in particular, other than the fact we do have our thing tomorrow evening with the, with the town.
Correct.
I have, um, I just, part of where, I, I have a number of medical tests I've got to take tomorrow, take four or five hours. I will definitely try to be there if I can, but if I can't, I hope people understand. Uh, reports from elected officials. I saw Mark out here earlier.
He's over here.
Hello, Mark. Assessor, do you have anything for us, sir?
Phil, that's the, that's the last district, just go around, so.
Uh, I don't see the sheriff, how about you?
Sheriff's over here.
Sheriff's there.
Oh, okay. He's in the grand.
Walk into, we're hiding out here in the hallway.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing I have to add, we were very, very close to having our last, Jeff had graduated from the state police academy very short, uh, few weeks, and we had to get him on board and through his, uh, field training officer program and, uh, out on the street, so hopefully, that'll happen within the next couple of months.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other elected officials? Mayor?
I'd just like to thank the commission for their vote today on behalf of everybody present.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, uh, now, you have anything? Bobby, you have anything?
Yeah, I presented you all with the packet on the baseball stadium today for the final draft of the performance criteria, and, um, we, I just received it this morning, and I will go over and look at it, and if you all, maybe we can vote on it next week. I think that's what's on the, um, on the schedule, so hopefully.
Did you say anything that creates concern, concern some email ahead of time?
Okay, yeah, that's, uh, all we did was change some wording in it. Uh, we went over it like four times and had meetings, so it's, it's going good, but I wanted to give you a copy of the final draft and present it to you today from, uh, from our committee there, so you can look at it, and hopefully, we can pass it next week.
René?
Yes, sir.
Not one thing?
No, my turn.
Okay, comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Gone once, gone twice, yes, ma'am.
Edie Vialor.
Aye.
I was, how you doing? I would like to thank the commissioners for voting the way they did, and I think this should've been passed a long time ago, but I don't wanna thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hearing known, uh, of a motion to adjournment?
Move for adjournment, second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. We are adjourned. Ten minutes break, we'll come back.